McMinnville Water and Light Commission, this being June 8th, 2021. It is 5:30, and so we'll go ahead and get started. Claudia, would you do a roll call for us?
Absolutely. I'll start with the McMinnville Water and Light Commissioners. Commissioner Tankersley.
Here.
Commissioner Gormly. Commissioner Christiansen.
Here.
Commissioner Tate.
Here.
Councilor Garvin.
Here.
Councilor Geary.
Here.
Councilor Minky.
Present.
Councilor Chenoweth.
Present.
Councilor Peralta. Council President Drabkin.
Here.
And Mayor Hill.
Here.
Thank you, Claudia, for doing that roll call. This evening, we are meeting with the McMinnville Water and Light Commission and receiving their, I won't say annual report, because I don't know that we meet annually, but the connection of the city council and the McMinnville Water and Light Commission is critical in that we're serving the same constituency. And so I'm going to turn the time over to General Manager John Dietz to introduce our topic tonight and start the discussion. So again, welcome not only commissioners, but also staff from Water and Light. And John, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, so thank you, Mayor Hill. We'll go through what's going on at Water and Light, some updates on projects, and then if the commissioner or the council have any questions. So I think Claudia is going to do the... Oh, Trina. All right. So, next slide, Trina.
So just for an update, Water and Light's budget is approximately $51 million. You can see most of that is in the light division. Six and a half million is the water division, and a small portion is the fiber division. We have approximately 17,000 electric customers and about 12,000 water customers. Water customers are primarily customers within the city limits of McMinnville. And then, next slide, Trina. So our electric budget, 75% of those costs are tied to BPA. And BPA is the supplier of our power, and also they supply our dollars for energy efficiency, which, over the last two-year rate period, was about $1.6 million. We anticipate that Water and Light will have spent that total and additionally may have spent some additional dollars from other utilities that have not spent their dollars. But we're getting close to the end of our current rate period, so we'll have a pretty good idea of that in September. Next slide, Trina. So these are our operating expenses for the electric system. 75% is power and transmission costs that we pay to BPA. Transmission costs are for the use of the BPA transmission system. And then power is from the 32 or 31 projects in the federal system plus one nuclear plant at the Columbia Generating Station. And then labor, materials make up 20%, and 5% of that total is the lieu of tax. Next slide. Our portfolio, we are 97% green, essentially hydro-nuclear. We have 4% that is considered unspecified purchases, which are purchases that the resource has not identified. It could be wind, nuclear, coal, natural gas, hydro, bio. Could be anything. We don't know what that is. And then we actually have some small purchases that we make from Grant County PUD. And then we also take the output of the Riverbend Gas Plant. So we burn the methane, it's burned, and then they produce electricity with that. Next slide. This shows where our sales go. 50% is residential, commercial, and 50% is large industrial, which would be Cascade Steel and Air McKee. Or I guess it's now air gas, they've changed. Next slide. So our rates, we do have some of the lowest rates in the Northwest. We do a rate study every two years, and we'll be going to the commission Tuesday with the current rate study. Looks like if the commission agrees, we'll have, in this next two-year rate period, we will not have any electric system re-increase. The commission will decide that on Tuesday. Water supply, we're actually in good shape. I know that the Northwest is in drought conditions right now, but we have not started transferring water from Maguire, which is something that we do sometime usually around the first part of July. So we're hoping to hold off on any transfers until the first week in July. Looks like we may have to start transferring next week, but so far, we're in very good shape compared to other utilities. And the last item there is our total combined average. Those are our average costs for water and electric costs for the average customer. Next slide. So this is a rate comparison for electric utilities in the Northwest. Water and Light is down at the bottom there. Second from the bottom, I would note that Oregon, West Oregon Electric, is one of the higher utilities, and that's primarily because they have a large system and very few customers. So we are actually, our water treatment plant is in West Oregon service territory, and we're actually their largest customer. So that gives you kind of a scale of why their rates are so high. Next slide, Trina. So current capital projects, right now, we're working on the Baker Creek Substation. Contractor is just about completed with the groundwork, and we're anticipating steel to be delivered within the next two weeks. And Water and Light crews will actually erect the steel, and we'll then do the wire bus, wiring for the low voltage. Pretty much all the work from the ground up at that point. We anticipate setting the power transformer sometime in early July. Total cost is about $3.5 million, and a very large portion of that cost is the power transformer, which is somewhere around $750,000. Next slide, Trina. So back in 2019, Water and Light purchased about four and a half miles of the BPA transmission system that serves our service territory. We did that for a couple of reasons. One, we felt that BPA was not adequately maintaining that line, and we wanted to take that over and maintain that. We actually, last year, we cleaned the right-of-way. We were concerned about fire danger, and so we actually went through and brushed and cleaned all that. The other reason was, we wanted the right-of-way for future expansion of our infrastructure, not only electric, but also water. We would be looking at potentially putting a water line in that right-of-way at some point. So we've actually, just actually just completed replacing five poles on the north side of the Baker Creek project as part of that project as well. Next slide, Trina. This is a project that we've been working on for a number of years. We have a pole at the intersection of Second and Hill Road that's actually in an island there. So that project will actually realign the transmission line and moves the transmission line to the north side of the road and eliminate the line on the south side of the road. So all of the line will go onto the new poles, and we'll eliminate the distribution and the transmission on the south side. That project's anticipated to cost about $600,000. Now, we have the poles now here, and we're just waiting to get bids for installation of the two steel poles that we'll have to install. Next slide, Trina. The water system. So we own about 6,500 acres of watershed. Timber from the water revenue, or from the revenue from the timber sales goes into the water capital facilities projects. And just to give you an idea, if we did not have that timber revenue, we would be looking at someplace around a 50% to 75% increase in water rates, because the majority of our capital is actually funded by that timber revenue. We store about three and a half billion gallons of raw water, and our treatment plant is, at current capacity, 22 million gallons with a maximum build-out of 30 million gallons a day. And our current transmission line has a capacity of about 18 million gallons, 17 to 18 million gallons. So we're continually replacing portions of that line. That line is about 10 miles, about 54,000 feet in length. We've replaced about 9,000 feet of it with another 45,000 feet to go. We anticipate when that project's complete that we'll have spent approximately $40 million to replace that line. So, and those costs continue to escalate. So that'll be a long-term project we'll be working on. We did, back in 2015, add a second tunnel for redundancy and resiliency. So we have two tunnels now. One's a 24-inch ductile iron pipe, and the other's a 36-inch steel pipe. Next slide, Trina. So these are capital projects we've done over the last 10 years from our master plan. $30 million water treatment plant upgrade in 2010. We've purchased, or we acquired a right on the Willamette in 2011. Did the finished tunnel project, the second tunnel, in 2015. Purchased a water right field, 5 million gallon day water right in 2016. And next slide, Trina. Purchased the intake site for a regional plant on the Willamette. So we actually own the site now. Did the study for the intake site to verify that we had a good site that was stable and could take a pump station and intake into the river. We did a, 2019, we completed about 6,600 feet of 36-inch ductile pipe that replaced our old 16-inch, portion of our old 16-inch steel pipe. Right now, we are waiting for Water Resources to approve our application for a water right on the second water, or third water right on the Willamette. That right is a 1954 priority right, which would allow us to take water pretty much anytime we need to. And that, we're waiting for Water Resources to approve that right. And then in 2020, we connected Lafayette to our system with a 24-inch HDP, high-density polyethylene pipe. Next slide, Trina. So this is the intake site that we purchased back in 2016. You'll notice we did some drone surveillance of the site, and we actually have a good spot for an intake. We have about 45 feet of depth in the river where we're at. So we have plenty of depth to install our intake. And we're looking at that project that's estimated to build the intake and the pump station, about $15 million. Permitting will take probably four years because of the intake in the river, so we're waiting. And that'll be basically dependent on when we have enough funding to move forward with that. Because once we move forward, we have two years to construct the intake. And so we'll want to make sure we have that funding in place before we move forward. Next slide, Trina.
John, I think Council Drabkin has a question.
Okay. Go ahead.
I do, I can come back to it at the end, too, if it's more appropriate. But I was wondering about tracking the Lafayette use versus the McMinnville use. And then also, I wanted to understand a little bit better the limitations or regulations as they exist or don't exist on that water share that we're doing with our neighbors. Thank you.
Okay, I can do that now. We have a meter, we monitor, we have a fixed contract. They can take up to 500 gallons per minute on that contract. And then we have a meter that monitors that.
And will that, is that true whether or not we're pulling from Maguire? Okay, so it's a blanket agreement over how much they can take per day?
Yeah, it's a cap.
A minute, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there's a cap. It's about 700,000 gallons a day is their cap.
Thank you.
And John, how much do we charge Lafayette compared to our regular customers in McMinnville?
They pay one and a half times the residential rate. And so just to give you a scale, our demand without Lafayette is about 12 million gallons a day, and they're about 0.7 million gallons. So, okay, so.
Johnny, I think it'd be worthwhile for you to talk just for a second about whether this will, whether we think this will impact our ability to supply water for people in McMinnville that they need between now and the time that the Willamette source would be online.
Yeah, this is actually what we call a surplus water agreement. So we actually have the ability to, if, it's a 21-year agreement with seven-year for, first seven years and then two seven-year renewals. And the goal would be that we build a, or we have the regional plant built at the end of that timeframe, and they would be taking water from the regional plant at that time. And so the idea is that the pipeline that is installed will then become their source for water from the regional plant.
And in the meantime, we are selling water that we would not be selling to the people of McMinnville, because they don't need to use it.
Correct.
So it's a win-win. Lafayette has a water source now that they couldn't do, and we have a place to sell some water that will ultimately help us finance our system.
Adam's got a question. Go ahead, Adam.
Dub tailing off the Lafayette usage, I was made aware of Carlton going to be utilizing some McMinnville water this summer so they can dredge their reservoir. What does that look like as far as capacity? Do we anticipate any of the, McMinnville residents going to be on any water restrictions of any sort?
No, their capacity, their maximum would be about 750,000 gallons. And that's, that agreement would be for one year as they're building, as they're constructing.
Okay, thank you.
And Kelly.
I'm sorry, Adam's question, was he referring to Carlton? I mean, okay. That answers my question.
And I can add that, as we went through, this is a long process to accomplish these two agreements. And our first priority was the citizens of McMinnville. And we worked very hard to make sure that it worked for our citizens and that also, of course, it had to be something that worked for the other people, too. But I think I can say for the whole commission, and if it had come up to something that looked to us like we would be jeopardizing our ability to sell water at fair prices and good quality to people in McMinnville, we just wouldn't have done it. But on the other hand, we feel good that we can also help our neighbors in a way that has always been intended to be a win-win situation.
Thank you, Tom. Sal?
Thank you, Mayor. John and the Water and Light Board, I really appreciate the forward thinking that you've done with respect to securing the additional water rights, both for McMinnville and the leadership on the regional water effort. My question is, is, I understand that we have sufficient long-term capacity to meet our city's need, you know, for the foreseeable future. My question is, have you noticed any difference in the flows at Maguire Reservoir over time as we've had ownership of Maguire and Haskins? Are they recharging at the same rate that they always have? Obviously, you chose to add additional capacity, both to address the size and, I assume, potential, just, you know, mitigating potential risk for not having sufficient water. So I was wondering if you could speak to those issues.
So we haven't had any issues, but we do track when we recharge or when we start spilling, and we're pretty consistent. You know, most of what we rely on is all rainfall up there. The other issue with the Willamette is really, the issue there is resiliency. If you think about our system, we basically have two transmission lines that run 10 miles to get to town. If we lose those, we have no water. And so the idea here is that we have a second source of water so that we can supply the city from two different locations, two different areas.
Thank you, John.
Yep. So one of the things that we're working on right now is what we call Zone 2. So right now, McMinnville has one pressure zone. That pressure zone is 100% gravity. We have no pumps to build pressure in our system. So basically, that is another reason why our rates are where they're at, because we don't have pumping infrastructure here. A Zone 2 would require us to build new pumping capacity. So we would have to essentially pump water to this zone to supply the zone, because it's above our service reservoir elevation. Those costs, to supply those 300 to 400 lots, range somewhere between 800 or 8 and $10 million. So what we're looking at right now is how we're going to fund those capital improvements for that number of lots. There's potential to have more lots than that, but right now, that is what we know as far as a future build-out. So that's going to be a project that may or may not happen based on those costs. And we're going to actually be going to the commission with the contract to look at, is there ways that we can either stage those costs or reduce those costs so that we can actually do the build-out there? Next slide.
John, just to help the council, this, of course, is up in the West Hills. If you went farther west from the existing development there, you're starting to get into what we would call Zone 2.
Yep. Next slide, Trina. So there's, this is our comparison of our water rates to neighbors and others in the area. Again, you can see that we're down towards the lower end of those rates. I think over the last 130 years, water, you know, McMinnville has obviously done things right with what we've got here. Next slide, Trina. So this is another project that we're working on. This is a three-mile lane, bridge replacement. We have a contract with ODOT. We'll be adding a 12-inch water main to the bridge, four electrical conduits, and two conduits for future fiber optics. Once we have that 12-inch water main in place, we'll actually, we have an existing water main that runs under the river that we'll actually abandon, and we'll rely on this 12-inch water main. Along with, we also have a 24-inch water main that runs to that side of town as well. I think Kelly has a question.
Go ahead, Kelly.
Yeah, could we go back to the West Hills slide really quick, like? I just have another question. Before this one, yeah.
Yeah.
I am going to take that off of there. Is it true, as I look at this slide, I know that we're the gray before you hit the pink and the yellow and the purple above. Is the peak area, when I talked with the contractor, Aster, he sounded like we could actually, he could actually take the water that's over there currently in the reservoirs for that particular area. Is it just the ones after that, the yellow? Or will the yellow also be buildable with the water that's in the reservoirs?
He could, if we would allow him to take it. He'd have to put booster pumps in. The issue with that is, every time we take lots out of that zone, that reduces the amount of lots that we have to maybe for future funding.
Yeah.
So basically, that's why we've said no, is because, for example, I think he was looking at, well, there's only 12 lots there that he would take out. Well, that would potentially reduce the funding that we can charge those lots by 12. And so that's why we're saying no.
Oh, well, thank you. I appreciate knowing that.
Yep, and it looks like.
I was just wondering if you could expand a little bit. You said you're going to abandon the subterranean, the, under the river line. Could you talk about what abandonment looks like, means from an environmental perspective and any other lens?
It's a cast iron pipe, so what we'll end up doing is, we'll be cutting the pipe, plugging both ends, and then abandoning the pipe in place.
And Kelly, did you have your hand up again?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Thanks.
So John, could you expand a little bit about why we wouldn't go in and dig that pipe out under the river?
Because environmentally, it would be far worse than leaving it there. It's, you know, it's just, it's just basically cast iron. So it's not toxic, there's no issues with the pipe, so. Environmentally, we'd just, we'd have to tear up the river to do that. We don't want to do that.
Thank you.
Next slide, Trina. So one of the, one of the things that we've identified in our resiliency planning, emergency preparedness, is the lack of liquid fuel storage we have. So one of the projects that we're actually working on right now, negotiating engineering for, is a fuel station here on-site for our facility, our fleet, and also our standby generators. We have one large standby generator at our water treatment plant, and we have one large standby generator here at our rain facility. I will say, in the ice storm that we had back in February, our standby generator at our water treatment plant ran for 130 hours because we had no power at the treatment plant. So that's, this is something that's critical to us to maintain services. So it is, we have been talking with the city about potentially doing some joint work on that as well. Next slide, Trina. And questions, any other questions?
So let's go ahead and open up for questions of John and the commission.
Well, John, to get things started, in the beginning, you talked about the Bonneville Program with conservation. Could you please talk a little bit about how long we've been doing that and about how much money we've invested in the community so that we have more efficient homes and businesses?
Yeah, we've been doing this since the 1980s, and I'm trying to remember the number. I believe it's somewhere in excess of $30 million that's been invested in energy efficiency in McMinnville since that started. Probably, it's probably closer to 40 million. One of the things that we've done this year is we actually did an LED install program for low-income. So we've actually increased our budget for installing lights in low-income homes. So that, that program has been very popular this year.
And John, could you talk a little bit about what we do, what some of the things we've done for businesses, too?
Yeah, so we've done efficiency, we do energy audits for both residential and businesses. We do, we've done pump upgrades or motor upgrades for businesses, lighting upgrades, heat pumps for commercial and residential. We have done hot water heat pumps as well. And typically, our program only works for electric. If you're a gas customer, Northwest Natural uses, they have their own program.
Thank you.
Let's go ahead, I see two hands up. I, I'm just going to guess, Zach, was yours up first?
Yeah, sure, thank you. Thanks again, everyone, for the presentation and joining us tonight. I think my question is a little in vain of the thread that Tom was pulling at a little bit, and it's, and it's maybe not one not readily available, but one that's just interesting and sort of, year over year, as we grow and consume more, but we try and curb those habits with efficiencies and new programs. Do you have sort of a year-over-year chart of just your bulk consumption at an overall rate of kilowatt-hours? And is that steadily going up? Is it very slowly going up? Is it peaks and valleys? Is it pretty? Is it pretty, you know, as we grow but get more efficient and create, you know, LED systems, heat pumps and do those things? Where are we at as just McMinnville as a net consumer?
So here's what, here's what I know. Um, so we have, uh, BPA, we actually have a high watermark. We actually have a certain percentage of the, the federal system we have access to. Our energy consumption here has not been growing. We actually have six megawatts of what they call, uh, headroom from our peak that we can, we can use. Um, so we've actually, if you look at year over year, we're actually down in energy consumption here. Uh, and we anticipate we'll be down again next year. And a lot of that is most probably, some of it is, uh, like the mill is our, you know, number one user. They have actually become much more efficient over time in their use of, um, yeah, there we go.
Oh, cool. This is fascinating.
Their use, uh, and this is just residential, but the mill is actually, um, not using as much energy but producing actually more tons of steel. So, so we're very consistent. We, we estimate that we grow about a half a percent a year in energy use.
How does that track with utilities across the board? Is that pretty average? Is that under subpar?
It's pretty average for, and I would say for consumer owned utilities, you know, we don't compare to the IOUs, but consumer owns, we're probably pretty close.
Cool.
Thank you.
Yep.
Adam?
Yeah, I have a few things. Uh, first, thanks to the commission and, uh, John for presenting tonight. Really appreciate all the insight, uh, and appreciate everything you guys do and the value you provide to all citizens and businesses in the community. Uh, my first thing was, you know, we had that one off ice storm, something like none of us have ever experienced before. And I was curious if you guys had recapped from that and, um, you know, we, especially me, uh, but I know a few other counselors when citizens were without power for what in a McMinnville grid is an unheard of amount of time, but in a PGE grid, not so much. They just felt like the communication wasn't quite as, wasn't enough or wasn't, I guess, wasn't as timely as they had hoped. And so I was curious if you guys had done any debrief on that in the event of long outages in the future, if you guys had a different, uh, timeframe where you update your website, maybe every 12 hours instead of once a day or, uh, if you had any insight on that, John? Or anybody else from the commission?
Yeah, I can, so we actually had, um, we had, at the peak, we had about 3,000 customers out. Um, we have about 17,000, so that gives you kind of a rough gauge. Um, what we had was a lot of damage, not from, um, trees, but from the weight of the ice. So what would happen is, one example is out of Highway 99, we actually had two broken poles that consumed one of our crews for 24 hours. They had to replace both those poles. And so we, uh, we did do it, so we were out, we had, I think the last few customers were out about four days. Uh, one of the things that we looked at, two things, one was communications. We looked at that and we're going to do some changes there. The other one was, um, customers that have, um, trees in their, in their yards that go to their services. We had a number of customers that had, um, equipment that was damaged on their homes. That's their responsibility that they needed to fix. And those were, those were issues that took a long time because the way we do restoration is transmission lines, substation, feeder, tap lines, individual customers. And we probably have more individual customers out this time than we've ever had out at one time. Because of ice on trees and particularly in their own, um, yards. A lot of those, we probably had over 350 customers that were out in that kind of arena that were caused by trees and neighborhood trees, primarily trees in their own yards. So one of the things that we did also is we're, uh, with this next budget, we're increasing our, our tree trimming budget as well. Um, and we're primarily focusing on, um, looking at outside the right of way now and trying to get with customers to get trees out outside the right aways trimmed or even removed in some cases. But yes, communications is one of the things that we debriefed on and we'll be updating.
Awesome. Thank you for that context. Um, and you know, as I said, I know how thin you guys were stretched with the amount of outages, so definitely appreciate all the work the line crews did and.
Let me give you another context there. Uh, we did not call for mutual aid here. Um, Portland General Electric had over 700,000 customers out. Um, some customers were out for over three weeks and they had over 140 mutual aid crews. So.
Yeah, in 08, I lived up Peavine right past, uh, Mack Water and Light Service and I was, in that snowstorm, I was without power for 13 days, so.
Yep.
I don't know how PGE life goes. Other thing was just redundancy in the system as the city's grown. I know you're putting that substation in that you mentioned in your report tonight, but, uh, if you looked at how our redundancy has been built in the nineties and in the 2000s, are, are we still kind of staying at that same level or are we a little bit thinner in our grid with redundancy than we used to be?
No, we, we actually are in very good shape. The reason that we're putting in the transformer at Baker Creek was because that transformer was at essentially what we call capacity. Uh, our system is set up so that we can move feeders from one substation to other without, um, having to have what we call a mobile substation. And so we can, we can switch essentially our system on the fly if we need to. Uh, the, what we've done with the second transformer at Baker Creek is we've set that up so that we can actually feed that substation from two different transmission sources. And we can actually take ones, one of those transformers down and leave the other one energized at any one time. So the goal there is that no, uh, no outage or no, um, we can, we can move load around without ever having to physically take one, both transformers out of service at the same time. So our redundancy is designed, our system is designed so that we, we can move load around within our system. We do have a couple feeders that we can't do that with and those would be the ones that go out into rural areas where we only have a, a single source because we don't have any loop in those and there's no way to build a loop in. And those would be primarily out Baker Creek or out Peavine.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Adam. Uh, John, I have a couple of questions that I think the council might be somewhat interested in. You talked a little bit about sustainability of our power sources. Uh, could you talk a little bit about some of the, uh, west coast, um, areas of sustainability down in California with, um, uh, solar and with wind? And how that really isn't as sustainable, uh, in, in the long run for us?
So I, I don't know if, in, in a little bit of context, I don't know if everybody knows, but back in 2020, California had some groundouts or significant out, rolling outages. And those were caused from a couple of reasons. First of all, there was, um, generate, gas generation was offline because of maintenance and, um, gas supply. But also what happened was there was a period where, uh, solar production dropped by 2,000 megawatts. And that was caused by, um, cloud cover. And so what ended up happening in California is they did not have enough supply to meet the demand. In the Northwest, we're a little bit different because we have, uh, hydro and our, at least for the consumer owned utilities, we're, we're all, uh, hydro based. So what's happened in the Northwest, build out has been very different here. Build out has been primarily wind because what you do with wind is you marry the wind with the hydro. And when the wind is blowing, you ramp down hydro. And when the wind isn't blowing, you ramp up hydro because you're storing the water behind the dams. So California only has about 4,000 megawatts of, um, hydro. In the Northwest, we have probably close to 16,000 megawatts and that's pretty much dedicated to what's called preference customers, which as a consumer owned utility, we are a preference customer and we have preference rights to that, uh, federal generation.
Yeah, thank you. Um, the other thing I think that might be, um, uh, im- important to talk a little bit about is, um, the process of building our bench with retirements coming. Uh, talk a little bit about turnover of employees, um, you know, uh, how we're trying to grow our employees for the long term.
Yeah. So, uh, we've had, and probably the city's in the same situation. We had in 2017, really what started a pretty significant ramp in retirements. Uh, 2017, we had seven retirements out of 60 employees. So over 10%. That trend, um, has slowed but continues. So we are actually, um, continuing to, continuing to hire. Um, and what we look at is a couple of things, um, skills, skill and ability. Our jobs here, especially where it really is critical is in the line, the electric lineman. To, to develop an electric lineman is a three and a half year process. That basically starts, they start as a groundman and, and what we call a pre-apprentice and work their way through that process. Uh, right now, we would be lucky, we have, uh, actually one opening right now and I think we've gotten three applications for a lineman position. Um, when we normally go out for position, it's not uncommon for us to get 150 applicants. So those we've actually had to grow our own. Uh, linemen, engineers, in any technical, what I would call technical field. So power resources, electrical engineering, GIS, engineering techs, water distribution operators and treatment plant operators are all, what we do is we end up trying to develop those internally because there are long ramps to get people and we want people that are going to stay with us for the long term.
Another question I have, John, you talked a little bit about the purchasing of transmission lines from, uh, the BPA. And you talked about, um, you know, some of the benefits that we saw from buying that la, that line in that we now in the right of way, we're going to be possibly able to utilize some of that right of way for water lines in the future. But was that a, was that a, um, equitable purchase for us? Um, you know, from a cost standpoint, uh, you know, did we pay a high premium to purchase those? And, and relate that to the benefits for us?
So, you know, when we started the negotiations on that, BPA wanted $600,000 for that. Um, so we ended up at $40,000 and the, the, really the key is it's the right of way. Uh, that gives us the ability not only to put in the, the current transmission, but also distribution lines and potentially fiber for future tie to close, we have a loop, a main loop around town, but we don't have a loop on the north side and that would actually allow us to close that loop. And then it also gives us an ability to tie back to the Windishar and any, and we actually have a piece of property on the north end of town for a future substation. What allows to tie that back in as well. And that basically allows us to have 115,000 volt loop around the, uh, the city that we own. And we maintain, we control that loop now. I think Kelly had a question.
Go ahead, Kelly. You're on mute.
Immute, okay. Uh, out of curiosity, could you tell, speak to security of the water source and everything? Just, I, in kind of loose terms, I, I don't think you would necessarily want to be real specific, but I'm just, it is a concern.
Yep, so, so access to the watershed is limited. Um, there's no hunting, fishing, any access at all. That's all, um, restricted. Uh, we do have the, the reservoirs fenced and we do have access limited. We do prosecute. Uh, I will say that we, uh, we have been working with the state police and over the last probably three years, we have, um, probably somewhere prosecuted somewhere around 30 to 40 people that have trespassed in the watershed and we do take it serious. Um, so we just don't, there is no access primarily just for what you said. We want to keep that watershed clean and we want to keep people out. Cause the biggest issue we have is human activity.
Thank you very much, John, and thank the whole board for being here tonight and it's been a wonderful update and information.
I think Tom had a question, didn't you?
Yeah, I saw Tom's hand up. Um, I think we've covered it. Thank you. Uh, well, actually no way to say, I, I just wanted to expand a little bit about, uh, about the, the line. As I recall, John, one of the other reasons we bought that loop was that Bonneville was going to have to, they hadn't maintained it really well and have to be upgraded and maintained. And they were going to charge us for it and I think you, you, it was a, it was a multiple of what it would cost us to do it.
Yeah, they, they were going to charge, they were looking at about $3 million to, to re, to re, uh, to replace, essentially replace the poles only.
And we can do that quite a bit cheaper?
Yeah, we, I just actually got the first report on the five poles we just replaced and we were at five poles, we were about $40,000. So if you multiply that by the number of poles out there, we'd be less than a million dollars. So we're substantially less.
So the commission was quite pleased that staff had identified this opportunity for us to, to go and then we have more control too, so. So win, win, win for us. And I think Bonneville was glad to get rid of it too, so. Uh, John, one other piece that I'd like to have you address, you know, as we are looking at aging fleets and state requirements with diesel, uh, I think Water and Light has been very innovative of the, the new rigs that they're getting of, uh, purchasing a cab with, um, uh, bodies or cha, uh, uh, the workstations that can be moved and adapted for multiple uses possibly. If you could share your thoughts on that.
We've actually standardized on a cabin chassis for all of our, um, I guess it would be considered medium duty, light, light to medium duty trucks, F550 is our standard. And, uh, we actually will, um, just buy a cabin chassis and move the bed to that new truck. So an example of that would be we purchased a, um, body for, uh, a fire truck. We actually have a fire truck that we stage at our watershed. And, uh, that is a chassis that we can just move or a cab, box that we can just move around from truck to truck, um, to keep the cost down. Because what we've discovered is the boxes are as much or more than the cabs and chassis. So that, that is something that we're, um, continuing to be working on.
Uh, the one last question that I have for you, John, is that on an annual basis, uh, outside of COVID, we have done watershed tours for individuals that, uh, such as the council or commission or some of our partners. When do we anticipate, uh, starting those watershed tours? And then if, uh, just to put a, uh, to let the council know that if there's anyone on the council that would like to participate in going up to the watershed, understanding what assets we have up there, how we protect them, how we clean the water and how we pipe it. So go ahead, John.
So, um, I'm not sure we're going to do one this summer because of fire, wildfire concerns. So if we do, it will probably be later in the year. Uh, we haven't had that conversation yet, but, uh, one of the big concerns this year is wildfires and how dry everything has become so early. Uh, so essentially all the access is going to be closed here probably within the next, I would guess, month. But we do do those annually and if there is interest, we'll, we will set something up. Uh, I would encourage everyone, uh, if you're interested to come, we can show you basically how everything works. Um, underground, overhead poles, substations, power transformers, watershed, filtration, treatment, all of that.
Remy?
I just want to say it's a beautiful, i- informational, but also just a beautiful tour. It's really majestic, so it's a great thing to take advantage of.
Really is. I've been on, I think a couple of times and it's really exciting to go see, well, what all you guys are doing. It's amazing.
Uh, let's go ahead with Adam next.
Yeah, John, I've heard a lot about those tours, so whenever those start up, I'm definitely interested, but no rush. As far as the wildfire danger, if something was to break out in our watershed, is that something you would just rely on the general fire service district and however BLM was to respond or is it something you guys have private contract agreements with like helicopter firms to drop it out of the reservoir and protect the watershed on a more privatized basis?
Actually, we have a, we have our own fire truck, we'll be first response, we'll be the first responder. And our, actually we have training scheduled for, I think June 24th for our water treatment plant operators. So we have a fire truck and we actually have our own tanker and we'll be moving that up there later this month. And then we actually contract with DNR, Department of Natural Resources and ODF to do fire as well. So actually ODF, or actually I think it's, I think it'll be ODF will be actually doing the training this year, so.
And you'd mentioned earlier in the evening that we're coming to the end of our, our current rate with BPA, I think is how I heard it, is that do you anticipate not our every other year rate study, but our actual rate that McMenville Water and Light pays for power from BPA, is that something you anticipate to see a large spike in or is it just kind of a more in the contract and you can just anticipate a typical like CPI rate increase?
So this year, so BPA does a rate study, they do their rate study every two years. This rate period, BPA is estimating a four and a half percent rate reduction in power costs, but an increase in transmission costs. Overall, the commission will see the rate study here on Thursday when the packets go out, but the consultant that we've hired is proposing a flat rate, zero rate increase from this coming two-year rate period. That'll be pending commission approval.
And then on your slide for power usage, you had air liquid on there and the steel mill is organic value, is that a major user or that just kind of falls into general industrial use?
Yeah, they're not, they're not a huge, they're a, they're a commercial user, they're not giant, but they do use some, but they're actually a much larger water customer than a power customer. So there will be a rate impact on water because of that.
And with the steel mill fire and kind of them being down for a few months, do you anticipate a rate impact on the electrical side as well then?
No, because their contract is pass-through, so we don't, we won't have a rate impact on the electric side because of them.
Gotcha, thank you.
Zach? One that just jumped up, can you tell me what you mean by pass-through?
Yeah, pass-through means that their contract is we get the bill from Bonneville and we pass those costs directly through to them. So there's no rate impact from, we don't collect anything on the energy and, and transmission that we are charged from BPA. All of those costs are rolled into the customer charge for us, so our, our costs are collected through the customer charge.
Is that water and electric?
Just electric.
Okay.
Water is, is on our rate schedule.
Okay, is that the only customer you use that for or is that a?
Cascade Steel and Air Liquide are the two.
Are those two? And that kind of, was that another one of my questions, but maybe that's, that's the answer to the question then, but do you have a uniform rate structure evenly applied?
For water, electric or?
Correct, correct.
Yeah, we have a, we have a rate structure, it's for water, it's based on meter size. So you have a meter charge and then the water rate is the same for everybody. Electric is the pass-through contracts and then a customer charge for each of those industrial customers. And then the electric rate for residential and commercial is different because we have other costs for maintaining the distribution system that Air Liquide or Air Gas and Cascade Steel don't have, they pay those, those costs directly.
Got it. In, when you talked about fire and resiliency at the reservoir, have you guys thought of or changed or worked to adapt new practices to manage the forest around it to, to sort of manage and get in front of it as we are going to see a changing landscape in, in the future? Or what's that process like and, and how could we help or be a part of those discussions? Because I think we're going to see those coming, McMenville won't be lucky forever and, and have fires around us, so.
So we're actually working on a wildfire plan right now, but we were actually up in the watershed yesterday for that very reason, we were actually looking at, BPA has a 230,000 KV volt line, 230,000 volt line going through the watershed. And what we are looking at is how we can trim more trees back from the right of way so that any tree that falls does not hit that line. So we're looking at next year, we would look at adding some of those tree, that tree removal into our forest plan. The other thing we've done is we've increased our brushing budget from one brushing crew, we're looking at going to one and a half brushing crews and changing our cycle as far as brushing and going after trees, not only that are near the line, but actually outside the right of way and seeing if we can get those property owners to allow us to take those trees out. Because those are actually part of the, go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, and, and real quickly, I, I was at that meeting and one of the other things we talked to the forester about is, we have a consulting forester, we talked to him about possibly on those trees that are outside the right of way but could get tall enough to follow the line, having a, having a shorter rotation on, on when we harvest them. We, we normally have about twice what the industrial foresters, forestry does in a rotation for harvest. And so we would cut it back to 40 or 50, 30, 40, 50 years and you, we could harvest those areas more often, so it would never get close again.
Yeah. So, so for an example, I, I talked to BPA, they gave us their LiDAR data and their estimate, their tree, they have a program they run to see, you know, based on tree heights and we'll be looking at removing seven to 800 trees along that right of way.
Wow.
To make sure that we don't fall, they don't fall under that right of way.
But we will replant, it'll just be, we'll then harvest them about twice as fast as we would normally harvest.
Sure, makes sense. Thanks for that. And then when you do do the tours, sign me up, I want to see if I can find the water meter on the Water and Light office, see where that was installed. Thanks.
Chris?
Let me get my name down, or my flag down here. Yes, so first off, just thank you for the presentation, that was very informative and very helpful. And, and I am very impressed with how we picked up that right of way, it was definitely a win, win, win for us. I also wanted to just add my list, my name to the list of those when you do your walkthroughs, that would be very interested in being a part of that.
Thank you, Chris. And for all the, for all the counselors, when we do our, when we do our watershed tour, I definitely will get ahold of each of you. I've done that consistently when we're doing it, but sometimes it just is a conflict to your schedules because we only do one a year, but I definitely will reach out to each and every one of you individually, including some major staff members that would be benefited by going up and being a part of that also. Okay, other questions for John or the group?
Adam has one.
Go ahead, Adam.
Just looking over my notes here from your presentation, there's one question I forgot to ask, you mentioned Lafayette pays one and a half times a McMenville rate user rate and I believe Carlton was the same. What's a McMenville rural user pay, like somebody on Portana Lane or, I don't know, I'm sure you have other rural customers, but that's just an area I know that has Mac Water and some houses.
So, so the Carlton rate is going to be the sta, our two times rate, so anybody outside the city limits is two times the rate except for Lafayette. So Carlton was also going to be two times. Lafayette has a long-term contract, so that's why their rate is one and a half.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
John, as, as I recall, one of the other reasons is, is they, they committed to take a certain amount, they'll, if they don't take the water, they pay for it anyway, so they, they're a steady customer. And also they are paying for most of the cost of that, that line that goes from our system to theirs, we, we, we put it in, but they're paying us back and I forget what the numbers are.
It's LGIP plus 2%.
No, I mean what, what the dollar amount of?
It was, their, their portion was about 1.8 billion.
So they have, they have, they, they've invested as well, so.
And they have a 10-year payback.
Okay, one, one thing.
Whoever negotiated that deal, you did a great job. Thank you.
It, it took quite a little negotiating for us to get to a point where it was a win, win, Adam, but it did come together. What I'd like to do right now, and then I don't see any hands up, John, could you introduce your staff and, and, and what their responsibility and how long they've been with Water and Light? And then let's move to the commissioners, and I mean, I think our commissioners are known by the council, but to share kind of how long they've been on the commission and maybe just a couple of words to the council. So go ahead, John, and have your staff introduce themselves.
Okay, I'll start, I'll, I'll start with James. James Burks, our water division director. And James has been with Water and Light for two years now, a little over two years. And might say where you came from in your background a little bit?
Yeah, I've been with Mac Water and Light for two years now. I came from Washington, up in Port Angeles, where I worked in public works up there and been down here for two years. So I always see water, fleet and facilities here at Mac Water and Light and been a good move coming down to McMenville here and being part of the community, so happy to be here.
And James, James is also a civil engineer.
And, and thus James was responsible for that Lafayette line and that was a major project that he did phenomenal on, on time, but I think it was a bit under budget, so congratulations from that perspective.
And then we have Scott Rosenbaum, he's the electric division director and Scott's been here 29 years?
Little while. Yeah, I was actually hired as an apprentice lineman here, so worked my way up through and so got a pretty good handle on the electric system and just broke my way up. I'm, I'm pretty proud of the electric system that we have here, so as, as John mentioned and showed in the presentation, it is a robust system, but the ice storm was also a good, good example of, of how good it is. Also though, with the long-term planning from the commission and these long-term agreements with BPA and stuff and our low rates, it's a great place to be. Thanks.
And then, did I see Sam Justice over there? So Sam's our general counsel.
Hello, hello. I've, I'm an attorney in McMenville since 1994 and then I had done work for Water and Light, I was in law for mayor in town as, as outside counsel and started there in 2006, started doing work for Water and Light with Mr. Hutterberg in 2007. And then I joined Water and Light as general counsel in 2017. And so I worked, worked here in-house for about the, well, for the last four years.
And then we, then we have, let's see, where Trina is, where, there you are, Trina. So Trina McManus, she's our clerk and she's actually moved to a new role as well. She's now the utility rate analyst and clerk. And she's been with us about 11 years almost?
Yep, just about 11 years. Started out in the engineering department as an engineering and operations assistant. Then in 2017, I transitioned over to the clerk position, also did some community relations work along with that. And then like John said recently, I've kind of transitioned over into power resources and rate analyst work, so yeah, good to be here.
And Trina came from?
I did come from the city of Lafayette, I worked there for 10 years prior to coming for, to Water and Light, so yeah, it was pretty cool to see the culmination of the project. I was on the other side of those discussions many years ago, so it was great to see that actually, actually come to be, so yeah.
I think I got everybody, I don't think I missed anybody.
So I, I'll just call on Tom as the chair of the commission to introduce commissioners and have them speak a little.
Thank you, Scott. Why don't we start with, let's see, I see is, let's see who's here?
Everyone but Ed.
Oh, okay, great. I can't, people are hiding on my screen here, okay. Why don't we start with our newest commissioner, then Kathy Tate, please? Kathy, we, we are excited to have you on the commission and maybe you could talk a little about your background and, and why you said yes.
Thank you. So I'm the CEO of Online Northwest here, I started here in 2000, but I moved to Yanhill County in, I think, 1995, first kind of been outside of Sheridan and then, and then I moved to McMenville in, in 2000. So yeah, I, you know, I have some, some really big shoes to fill because Patrick Fuchs, who's also my partner, was, was commissioner and he, he retired and Mayor Hill called and, and chatted with me about, about taking a, a place on the, on the commission and I think that there's a lot of synergy between, you know, what we're doing here in the, in the community, in the city and what's happening at Water and Light. I've had a long-term, you know, relationship with John, I've known him a really long time and always been really impressed with everything that's happening over at Water and Light, so I was really interested to learn and I have to say that I, you know, I just started in February and everything is a, is a learning experience at this point, so I was really excited to see the agenda tonight because a, a lot of this is, is an education for me and, you know, as far as the city goes, I really appreciate so many of the questions that you asked tonight because it's, everything that gets talked about is, is new and interesting and, and I'm learning a lot, so I hope that I can take some of, some of the things I've learned over the years with running a, you know, a fiber and wireless network here in the community and working with community members and, and find a way to add some value, but right now I just appreciate being a part of a kind of an amazing institution that's, that's going on for so long here, so thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Jody Christensen?
Thank you. Yes, so Jody Christensen, I was formerly the executive director for the McMenville Economic Development Partnership and through that work, I worked very closely with John, who served on the board, but also it became quite clear early on that Water and Light was an asset in both business recruitment and business retention and expansion in the community, so I had an opportunity to really learn about the enterprise in that way. I served in that role for about 12 years and in January 2019, I moved to the governor's office and I served as a Mid Valley Regional Solutions Coordinator. At that time, I was rolling off the airport commission and Mayor Hill called and he said, "Well, since you're not doing that, I have another, another opportunity for you." So I was delighted and honored to be considered for the commission, so I've been serving in that, in this role since January of 2019. And I think that one of the assets that I really focus on in McMenville is the ability for a, a group like this to come together with, you know, different roles in the community, but find that synergy and that, that really important place of partnership and moving the community forward and supporting community members, so I really have enjoyed this work and thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Well, I, I've been on the commission for, as Scott would say, a while. I think it's 31 years, Trina, now? And it's, it's been a wonderful experience. First of all, the staff is, as you can tell, is great to work with, our, our staff is, is smart and they have McMenville at heart and they look forward. And then the other thing that the commission has is this history behind us of other commissioners who've had all the foresight and pl- who've had all the foresight and planned ahead. And so what, what really the, the staff does and what the commission tries to continue is, you know, planning for the next generation. What's best for McMinnville for the next generation? And, and it's, and there's always something new to learn. It's, it's fascinating. And we've always had a good mix of commissioners who, who brought different, different expertise and approaches and specialties. And I'm glad to see we're continuing that. So it's, it's been a pleasure. And for those of you who voted to reconfirm me to the, to the commission, I appreciate it. Thank you. And, and it's just been a, it's, it's a great, it's a great part of our community. And it goes way back and it, I think it says a lot about what McMinnville's about.
And to that end, Tom, Ed Gormley is not with us this evening, but Ed has been with the Water and Light Commission as mayor. And then after becoming, going off as mayor, then he's been on the Water and Light Commission continuously. So he's, he's thirty-plus years along with Tom. And, and those two bring so much history and knowledge. You know, Tom, with his land use information and his background as a former lawyer, and then Ed with his plumbing and mechanical background brings tremendous value for us newbies on the commission. And we learn every meeting. And it's indeed a pleasure to work together as a commission, but also working with this fabulous staff and John. We're very fortunate in McMinnville. I have the opportunity to serve on a couple of boards and representing on Water and Light throughout the state. And they always talk favorably about Mack Water and Light. So the last thing that I would do, and then we will just, we will, we will adjourn our meeting. But just for Water and Light, I, I would like to just recognize staff from McMinnville. You may talk to people from time to time, but I'd really like to put a face and a voice together. And so I'll just shoot very quickly across. Amanda Gall Hinman is our attorney. Amanda, just introduce yourself very quickly. And you and Sam, I know, talk, talk with one another on a consistent basis. But Amanda?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Hill. I'm Amanda Gall Hinman. I'm the city attorney. I came from Wilsonville and I've been here since August, so I'm just about to hit my one year here.
Great. Let's go over to Heather.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm Heather Richards, Planning Director for the city. And I came here five years ago from Redmond, Oregon. And I think I've worked with everyone on the commission and I've worked with John and his team as well, and it's been a great partnership.
Thank you, Heather. Let's go to Jennifer.
Hi, everybody. I'm sorry for the slowness. New, new computer, exciting, powerful new computer. I'm Jennifer. I'm the Finance Director. I've been with the city for just over a year and a half at this point. Worked very closely with folks in your finance department and look forward to getting to know people a little better when things become more normal around here. And I look forward to getting to know better my new town. I relocated from St. Helens. So Nita would love to take the tour that you described as well. So good evening.
Thank you, Jennifer. Let's go to Susan.
Hi, everyone. I'm Susan Muir, the Parks and Rec Director. I've been here for almost four years and before I was here, I was with the League of Oregon Cities and City of Eugene.
Thank you, Susan. And then let's go with Mike. Mike's known and he's in a consulting position right now, but Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. And as you noted, I have semi-retired. Couple more weeks and I'll be fully retired. I think the only thing I would add is I've always appreciated John's approach to his work and willingness to coordinate with our staff on infrastructure issues. And I would concur with what everybody said about what a great team he has and, and what a pleasure it's been to work with him over the years.
Thank you, Mike. Well, I appreciate the dialogue that we've had this evening. We really are partners in bringing utility services to the table in McMinnville. And so we really wanted to take this opportunity to, to really, really know what's happening at Water and Light. There's some, some phenomenal things happening. They're our partners. And now I feel like you know, know the commissioners enough and staff. If you ever needed to reach out, you could feel comfortable in calling. So I don't want to belabor anything. Any last questions or thoughts before we adjourn this meeting? Seeing none, thank you, counselors. We will be reconvening at seven o'clock for our regularly scheduled counselor, city council meeting. So thank you all.
Thank you.